We will call the meeting to order at six forty-nine. This is the public hearing, first public hearing of the evening. We can all stand for the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag.
America. One nation. With liberty and justice.
Okay, next item on the agenda for the public hearings, the seating of the alternates. We don't typically see alternate during a public hearing, so we're just gonna kinda skip on over that. We have three cases on the docket this evening of Fort Buckingham Road, one eleven Bunge Road, and four ninety-one North Main Street. We're gonna do this the same way that we always do. We're gonna hear from attorneys, landowners, surveyors, and, you know, contractors, developers, all of that stuff first, and then we'll hear from the public. We're gonna keep it civil, civil, we'll go down the line with questioning like we normally do. So the first case that we are going to hear tonight is for Fort Buckingham Road. This was brought to us back in November. So this is a, you know, another reapplication for that. So the Seymour zoning Board of Appeals will conduct a public hearing on November fifth, which acts that's tonight, because it was moved due to not having a forum. At seven fifteen PM in Norma Drummer Room, Seymour Town Hall, one First Street, Seymour, Connecticut, for the following application. Application for a variance of section six zero table of dimensional requirements to reduce the minimum side yard setback requirement from twenty-five feet to approximately thirteen feet for the construction of a garage addition. The property is located at Fort Buckingham Road, Seymour, Connecticut. A copy of the application is on file in the Seymour Town Hall. At these hearings, interested persons can appear and be heard. Written communication will also be received dated at Seymour, Connecticut, the thirteenth day of October, twenty twenty, Seymour Zoning Board of Appeals, respectfully, Richard Dempco, Chairman. Okay, so this is pretty much the same application that we saw back in August? So, uh, who would like to speak on behalf of Fort Buckingham Road to give us a little bit of a synopsis as to what you would like to do or what you decided to do in this since we last heard this?
Okay, for the record, my name is Jesse Judson. I'm a licensed land surveyor with an address of fifty-two Main Street in Seymour, Connecticut. Also with me this evening is Maria De Souza, the applicant and the owner of Fort Buckingham Road. Again, we were before you were requesting a variance of section six point oh to reduce the minimum setback requirement from twenty-five feet to approximately thirteen feet for the construction of a one-car garage addition. The lot is a one-acre parcel located within the R forty zoning district. It's created prior to the current zoning regulations. The parcel is an existing non-conforming lot, as it is only a hundred feet wide where the dwelling is located and at the front setback line where a hundred and fifty feet is required by today's regulations. The existing house has four bedrooms and a one-car attached garage. The surrounding neighborhood. Oh, I'll wait a second.
Okay, continue.
Okay, the surrounding neighborhood is an older section of Great Hill, where most of the homes did not conform to the current regulations and setbacks. Similar to other houses in the neighborhood and lots, the existing house on this site does not conform to the current zoning regulations and at the left side yard is only twenty feet where fifty, where twenty-five feet is required. And in front of the house is only setback about forty-two feet from the front property line, where fifty feet is required by today's standards. The applicant is proposing to add a one-car addition to the right side of the existing one-car garage. The addition is needed to provide an additional parking space and improve the safety and function of the present driveway. This is a four-bedroom house. Presently, the two owners live there. They have two dependents which drive, and they also have elderly parents that stay with them. So oftentimes, there's five cars parked in this driveway. Again, the driveway is only about two feet back from the front. There's only forty-two feet from the front of the garage to the property line. And so this doesn't leave a lot of room for parking and maneuvering. And oftentimes, cars are parking on the side of the road or backing out into the street and provides a sort of an unsafe condition. While the addition of the one-car garage will not solve all the problems, it will improve the present situation and provide increased safety. By adding the garage, we're gaining, you know, a parking spot in the garage, but we're also gaining a spot in front of it as well. Originally, the applicant wished, wished to add a two-car garage addition onto the house. The two-car garage addition would have come within a couple of feet of the side property line and wasn't really a reasonable fit. Additionally, we looked at other places to put the garage on the property. But on the rear of the property, there's an intermittent water course, which is a regulated wetland in the town. And with the hundred-foot setback from that, that's required, along with the existing septic system is located to the rear of the house, takes up the backyard. So between those two, you know, the wetlands and the septic system, the backyard is pretty much ruled out from putting it back there. And additionally, it would be rather difficult to access back there. So then we looked at just adding a one-car garage along the side of the existing house. And I'm gonna show an alternate plan that we had here. This was basically just adding the garage, one-car garage, twelve foot wide, onto the existing garage. This particular option, we didn't go with because it required two variances of the zoning regulations. It required a side yard setback variance, along with a front yard setback variance. That garage would only be forty-one feet back from the property line where fifty is required, so we would need a variance there as well. Additionally, we don't get that extra little parking and maneuvering area by moving the garage back. So in a sense, the plan that we have submitted for the variance is more or less our Plan C, is actually what's our third alternative. Again, we've located, we pushed the garage to the back, so we don't have to have a front yard setback variance, just the one side yard setback variance. And it also gives us some additional maneuvering for the driveway and parking.
Okay, so this plan has then been revised?
No, no, it's the same plan that you had seen in September.
It is the same plan?
Yep, the exact same plan, it's on September.
Okay, so you're now for a side yard.
Yeah, the same as we were before, yep. So moving along, I just wanna go over a couple of things. In the Seymour zoning regulations, section nineteen point oh, as for the zoning board of appeals, and under the standards, section nineteen point three E, you know, it says, "An application for a variance of lot size, area width, or frontage, or an application for a yard or setback variance may be granted by the board upon finding that their request is similar to conditions prevailing in a neighborhood and a valid hardship exists." So in speaking of prevailing conditions in a neighborhood, sorry, so it's a rough aerial image, but it's from the town GIS website. But, uh, so this is our house here, number four Buckingham Road. You can see the existing one-car attached garage and the driveway coming out of Buckingham.
We, your, your screen hasn't changed from the original image. So you might need to stop sharing and reshare whatever your new screen is.
Oh, sorry.
It's okay.
I thought, I thought it was following, following along. Can you see the aerial image now?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, so this is the, the house we're talking about, number four Buckingham Road. You can see the existing one-car garage and the driveway out to the front. Immediately adjacent to us to our west, number six Buckingham Road, is very similar where that lot's only a hundred feet wide, like ours, where a hundred and fifty feet is now required. This house does have a two-car attached garage to it. But more of note, the existing house is only four feet from the side yard. So that house is within four feet of the side property line. Also adjacent to us is number ten Buckingham Road. This house has an existing garage that was only nine feet from the property line. And just in twenty nineteen, a variance was granted to add a two-car garage onto that existing garage. And again, that will only be nine feet from the side property line. Moving over to the easily side of the parcel, number thirty-five Great Hill Road, the house on this parcel is within five feet of the front property line, where fifty feet is required. Looking at number two Buckingham Road, both the garage and the house don't meet the setback requirements. And directly across the street from this, the existing house and barn are essentially on the front property line, nowhere near the setback requirements. So as far as prevailing conditions in the neighborhood, our proposed plan of...
Hi Jess.
Yes. Our proposed plan with the thirteen-foot side yard setback is actually less non-conforming than the, all the conditions around it. As far as hardship, again, the parcel is an existing non-conforming lot. It's only a hundred feet wide, where a hundred and fifty feet is required by the current regulations. Clearly, the zoning commission, the right reach regulations, felt that in setting the minimum lot width to a hundred and fifty feet, that a hundred and fifty feet is required for a reasonable use of the properties in this zone, essentially, especially since these parcels require onsite septic systems. Expanding the one-car garage to a two-car garage, an existing four-bedroom house in the R forty zone is a reasonable use and similar, and actually less non-conforming to the prevailing conditions of the neighborhood. The additional parking space will also provide a safer condition that then presently exists for vehicles maneuvering in and out of the driveway on the Buckingham Road. Pretty much what I got, and I'm here to, you know, have it answering questions.
Okay, let's go down the line. Bob, you got any questions?
No, not at all, seems pretty cut and dry.
Okay, very good, Phil?
Um, there was a, there was another plan. When it brings the garage right to the front where that vestibule is. Yeah. And it's, it's about thirty, thirty square feet less than this proposal. Is this one more desirable than the other one? And then the other one would have needed a second variance for front setback?
Correct, our proposed plan that were, um, so the other one brought the garage up to the front, and again, it needed two variances. It needed a front yard setback and a side yard setback. It's only, it was less than a foot difference from the side yard setback, so it's really minimal.
My question would be, what the applicant would be more, is more desirable to have the other one or this one?
This one. This is what the application is for, we're only requesting the one variance for a thirteen-foot side yard. Because this one, we only need one variance. And it also provides, you know, a little bit of additional driveway space in front of this area.
Okay, alright, I can, I get it. All set.
Okay, Jeff?
Um, no, this was a bit more thorough than I think the last time we, we viewed the other application. So I think a lot more of our questions and worries were answered here. So I think this is, um, a lot more clear regarding this application.
Very good. Paula?
Uh, nothing.
You got nothing? All right, um, is there anybody else wishing to speak in regards to Fort Buckingham Road? Okay, is there anybody from the public who wishes to make public comment on Fort Buckingham Road? Public comment on Fort Buckingham going twice? Public comment on Fort Buckingham going three times? Hearing no other public comment on Fort Buckingham Road. This public hearing is now closed. All right. Moving on. And the next case on the docket this evening is an appeal of zoning enforcement action on one eleven Bunge Road. Uh, so I would like to open this public hearing at seven oh four. We already said the pledge of allegiance, we don't seat alternates for a public hearing. Same deal, I wanna hear from attorneys, landowners, property owners, surveyors first, and then we'll move on to the public, uh, public debate. So here we go. This was notice of public hearing, December third, twenty twenty. Once again, this was postponed because we did not have a forum. Seymour Town Hall, Norma Drummer Room, one First Street, Seymour, Connecticut, oh six four eight three. It's appeal of zoning enforcement action on one eleven Bunge Road, Seymour, Connecticut, respectfully Chairman Richard Dempco. Okay, who would like to tell us a little bit about what's going on here on one eleven Bunge Road? We state the name, address for the record.
Mr. Chairman, it's Mike Margaski, zoning enforcement officer, can you hear me?
Yes.
If you'd like, I can bring you up to speed for this.
Yeah, sure, just give us a little rundown of what's going on. Is the applicant on with us tonight?
Uh, yeah. Yes, trying to, the video was up there.
Okay, oh, wait. There you are.
Right there.
I'm hearing you.
I can see Mr. Stanis here.
Okay. Here we go, okay, um. All right, Mike, why don't you tell us a little bit about what's going on, and then we'll hear from the property owner?
Um, basically, what you have is you have a, um, one eleven Bunge Road is within the residential R forty district. This property consists of approximately three point three seven acres. It's on the north, northwest side of the town. It consists of a seven, a single-family dwelling with several long-standing detached accessory structures and a large barn, several horses around those properties. Basically, in early September, the office had taken a complaint in regards to the operation of a landscaping business within a residential zone. Um, under our zoning regulations for permitted uses under the tables, um, under five point two, um, operation of a landscaping use is a prohibited use under our current regulations. The notice was sent to, um, the parties to be, and they have requested an appeal of, um, the order to, um, abate the conditions or, um, any of the other paths of, um, operations where they could possibly pursue, um, compliance with the regulations.
Okay, all right, I'd like to hear from the property owner.
Hello, Mr. Richard Dempco, it's, uh, my name's Kevin Stanis. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, we are not a landscaping company, we're a tree service.
Okay.
Been a tree service, just always done trees, wood for the heating, the barns, the, the woodchips for the paddocks, for the horses, the cows. It's what it's been for, for, since I've been born, for three hundred, almost two hundred years for the family.
Okay, and just for the record, I mean, this is, this property is also known as Little Bit Farm, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, continue, please.
And came home to a, a, a notice for the appeal to, to have the business moved out. I was renting a yard, my father got the, uh, diagnosed with stage four colon cancer, had to move the trucks out of the yard I was paying for and had to bring everything home, because I had to start paying everything here. I couldn't afford to pay for storage for a yard anymore, for the equipment. So now everything's home, I assumed all the payments for the mortgage here, helping my parents out, because my father's out of work, with stage four colon cancer.
Okay. Do you have any other farm equipment on the property?
Tractors, tractors, machines.
Go ahead.
Uh, tractors, the machines that have always been here for the, for farm equipment.
Okay, um, and you're basically appealing this decision because you do not feel as though that this is correct based on the equipment that's on the property that's used for farming? Am I correct there?
Yes, we use the trees for the farm, it's always been that.
Okay. Um, all right, so we're gonna go down the line and have a little bit of question and answer with you. So once again, Bob, you have any questions?
Um, no, it's always been a farm, and the equipment is used for farm, known as a farm. I don't have any questions outside of that as far as zoning, so no.
Okay. Bill, what do you got?
Couple of questions, okay, so this situation is not like a variance that we grant. This is a, an appeal of a decision from the zoning enforcement officer. The original complaint is, has to do with operating a business with heavy equipment. The noise occurring due to the, due to the business, which happens before seven AM and after nine PM. So our zoning enforcement officer was instructed to go investigate because of the complaint. And he puts in, he goes and investigates, has a conversation with all the information I'm reading. And in his opinion, um, he's our employee, he, he says that there's a, um, a violation of the R forty zoning, and he sees, uh, commercial trucks with, um, lettering and a business name on the property.
Okay.
So a wood chipper and a bucket truck and the dump trucks that are placard, that's the business. So that's where I think the cease and desist came. And then there were several, um, avenues of, of mitigation that were offered. Now, i- 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 if that's the problem, and we're saying that, uh, okay, now because of the complaint, we investigate, there's a business being run on this property and it can't be, but the nature of the complaint came from noise. So what, 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 to lift this, we, we have to do what's right. What, whatever's right is right, whatever the rules are, are the rules. But i- if we could get away with a situation where if the complaint is only generated about the noise, can we all be adults here and say, "This is what I'm gonna do"? Because I don't wanna cut here as about a wood chipper, whether it's a business or not a business. But if there's a complaint and the rules are to protect you from these complaints, for the protection and the rules that help the people that are complaining, they're saying, "Hey, the rule's broken. I need to, you guys have to protect me for this." So what we need to do is, what's this, I don't understand the story with, uh, the two thousand and twelve application or request for the okay from planning and zoning. Does that mean that the property in two thousand and twelve was okayed for landscaping type of business?
No, it's not landscaping at all, though.
Okay, well, if, but...
And I, I don't know what you're talking about from two thousand and twelve, I don't have that in front of me.
Mike, do you have any light on this situation?
I do, I actually think you're just reading into, this was all based, my report was inclusive of just all of the conversation that was there. So what you're, so what you're reading about of two thousand and twelve is just their response to me, if, if they can't do what they do, why does somebody else get to do that on, on the adjoining property? So what you're reading in two thousand and twelve was a decision by the Planning and Zoning Commission at that time to approve similar facility of a well drilling and a welding fabrication shop. So that is separate from...
Okay.
That, that's a whole separate matter, you're, you need to focus on, on whether or not this is an allowed activity used for this project.
Okay, so right now in front of the R board, we have the, this, we have to make a decision on to accept the, the appeal and lift the cease and desist, and everything stays the same. But to make that decision, is there a business that's not supposed to be there, there? And without getting that question answered, another satisfying situation would be if the complainant's major complaint is noise, and we mitigate the noise some way, and can't we all get along, and maybe the situation will be rectified for the benefit of everybody involved?
Can I chime in for a second here?
Yeah.
My guys come here at seven o'clock in the morning, my employees show up. Trucks are started at ten after seven, quarter after seven. They may run here for fifteen, twenty minutes just to warm up the trucks, and we leave, we don't work here. We leave, we go to the job site, we do the trees, the only thing, we come back during the day with the wood, and that's it.
Okay, but the, but the regulation that's, that's in question is operating a business in an R forty. So if you're operating a business, and you're not supposed to be operating it in a R forty, that's the, that's the basis of this complaint.
I, I mean, like I, like I said, I, I brought everything home when my father got diagnosed with the, uh, with, with the cancer.
I, I wish I could do something about that, and, and I feel terrible, and I understand.
And it's, and it's, and it's the farm equipment that we use to take out, that's what goes out, and then it comes back at the end of the day.
Well, the farm equipment goes, goes out, what do you mean? You know, farmer equipment doesn't usually leave the farm, it's a business, it's business trucks that are leaving the, the farm area and going to work and then coming back, right?
It goes off, it'll pick up the wood from jobs, and then it comes back.
Okay.
And then we use the wood, we heat the buildings, we use the woodchips for the horse paddocks.
I understand. All right, um, okay, I'll listen to more, and then I'll...
Um, I just wanna kinda, or a little bit, um, in regards to the noise complaint. When you say the trucks are started at seven AM, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so that, just for the record, I believe as well, within the noise ordinance, am I correct there? Somebody wanna correct me there?
I'm looking for that, Rich, I'm looking for it. In the zoning stuff, I'm, I'm looking for the...
Yeah, I believe the noise ordinance is six AM, actually, um, but don't quote me on that. All right, moving down the line, um, it's, yes, six AM is what it is. So it is well within the noise ordinance, if this is truly what this is all about. Jeff, what do you got?
I, so looking at this, I see that the noise was part of the base complaint. But, um, like we said, now it's come to light, the, the seeming running of a tree service out of there. So it's an issue of zoning, and it's, it's not, it's, it's an issue of it's not allowed in the R forty. And I, I understand your situation, um, and the personal hardship that's going on with your family. But I don't know how to go about approving it, um. I, it's, it's not, for me right now, it's not necessarily the, the issue of the noise, because like we said, it's, it's after, it's seven o'clock to nine o'clock. Nine o'clock is, I believe, also within the ordi- ordinance, but, um, you're not supposed to be operating those kinds of businesses in the zone, that's more of the issue I'm seeing here. So I, I, I don't know what my other board members feel on this, but that's, that's where I'm at, um, regarding it. I don't know if we could discuss, but I, I, I don't know where to go from it.
I think what, what needs to kinda happen here is we need to take a look at, you know, what exactly this application is looking to do. You know, number one, and number two, I think that we don't wanna set a precedence here of telling small business owners who store equipment at their house or on their property, um, that, that they can't do so. Because that's not really what this application, I don't think, is, is really about. I don't know, Paula?
So, so, well, if you're saying that, I have a question for, for the applicant. Are you, besides obviously starting your vehicles and warming them up, are you doing any of the services? Um, are you, besides obviously starting your vehicles and warming them up, are you doing any of the services? Are you chipping on the property? Are you doing anything that is related to the tree service on your property?
Uh, no.
Okay, so you're just storing, you're storing the vehicles, just, just a recap. Let's try to get all this information straight. You're storing the vehicles, you're starting them at seven AM within the noise ordinance time. You're leaving to go get wood supplies, whatever for the farm to operate. And then you're returning. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mister, Mister, go ahead.
Um, Paul, let's get to Paula and then we'll double back to you, Phil.
Okay.
Paula, what do you got?
Um, I still have, uh, I'm not finding, Phil, if you could ever shed any light on a section, this is where Jim would be a real good asset here. Um, typically when I looked at um, what we've looked at previously, and this is not, um, a hundred percent with regard, you know, we, we have on section twelve point three point two for standards. Um, but this pertains to rock crushing, screening, sifting, et cetera. So it talks about the maximum hours of operation shall be from seven to five on weekdays and from eight to noon on Saturday. That's the only thing I found so far as I'm going through with regards to noise. Um, I guess my question would be, is that, you know, when you said that you're not doing work on the property, but if you bring trees back, you would be chipping them, correct?
No, the wood, wood will get used for heat for the homes, the barns. Um, the chips already come back in chip form. And then the logs, the lot, the lot, what, what part of the logs, like if we bring pine logs home, we'll mill the pine logs for boards for the horse paddocks.
Okay, okay. All right, so I haven't really found something that says, um, anything with regards to, um, noise other than, I would have to look up noise ordinances for Seymour for decibel level and for, um, you know, like hours of operation. That's the.
Okay, five point two.
Five point, section five point two?
Appendix A zoning regulations five point two, tables of permitted uses. Um, Mr. Chairman, could I just jump in real quick?
Uh, yeah, Paula, you okay? You'll give some of your time to Phil?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Phil.
Okay, I just want, I just, I wanna get my head straight and make sure we're on the same page. This is not an application for a variance. This is, that's why I asked how many people we have for a corner. Because we need four straight, I believe, to, the appe- this is an appeal of a decision. Now, this is not us granting the okay to do this type of work. It's not our charge right now.
Right.
We're, we're only here to, we're here to understand uh, that there, that our enforcement officer placed a cease and desist on the property. The property owner was given three or four, um, wa- ways of mitigating the situation. One of them was to appeal the decisions to our board. Now, all we would do is either uphold the, uh, cease and desist or grant the appeal and he would release the cease and desist. But in doing so, we still have the situation that needs to be discussed that our pla- our zoning enforcement officer said to us in writing. And we have two separate complaints, not one, two separate complaints. That in the R forty section, which is where one eleven Bunge Road is, there is a business being operated off that property and it's not supposed to be. I don't wanna cut, uh, you know, I, I don't wanna get into the discussion of whether he's just starting a truck and driving out. The business is, is being operated out of one eleven Bunge Road. The section says that, uh, five point two, table of permitted uses. Com- commercial uses, building materials, hardware, landscaping, garden and stone product business in a residential R forty zone district and use is not permitted. That's what it says. Our enforcement officer went, he deemed that this is going on, it's not permitted, put a cease and desist. There's three or four, uh, ways for this, um, um, situation to be mitigated. They chose to come to us to say, hey, lift the cease and desist, get rid of this, uh, um, um, appeal this decision for me. If we do that, if we do that, the situation still remains. And we've done nothing of our responsibility to the, to people that have complained. But they didn't complain to us as a board, they complained to the town. So I, there's.
Play to the town?
There's two, there's two, uh, written complaints in the packet.
Okay.
One fifteen, one fifteen and one nineteen Bunge Road.
One fifteen and one. If I recall correctly, didn't, didn't we approve a driveway extension for one nineteen a little while ago to get to the back of the property? Where there was, uh, auto mechanic, uh, stuff going on there?
You're a very young, young man and your memory is much better than mine.
I believe that we did that a few months ago. Um, I'd like right now actually to defer to Attorney Marini, who is on with us today, to get his opinion on this because I don't think, once again, that the scope of what we are supposed to be doing is setting a precedence as to who can and cannot run a business or store, uh, equipment on their property. Um, we are just here dealing with the specific complaint at hand, which is, do we uphold the citation? Or do we, you know, grant the, you know, application and, you know, so, uh, Attorney Marini, would you like to weigh in on this from a legal perspective here? Because I think that this case is, is actually not as complicated as it, it is turning out to be.
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, um, members of the board, um, good evening. Um, certainly a lot of good questions asked and a lot of good discussions so far, uh, tonight. And I think it is a good opportunity here to narrow the focus a little bit and really make sure that we're crystallizing, you know, what, what the real issues are here. And as, uh, uh, as was just articulated, this is really about the violation notice from your enforcement officer. And this is all about whether or not that violation notice should stand. There really is no other pertinent issue here. And with respect to analyzing that, the first question, which has already been sort of, uh, we've, we've already made some progress into it, is whether or not there is a commercial activity on the property that would be in violation of five point two, the table of permitted uses. And of course, we've seen that there is language there about, um, a prohibition on landscaping businesses, storage of landscaping products. Um, we also know, looking at sec- uh, section five point one, that's simply substantially similar uses are, are also to be deemed prohibited. So there definitely is a relevant question to be answered as to, is there a commercial use going on in that property that violates those, uh, those guidelines? Now, of course, there's, it's also a very good question, is it taking place on the property or off the property? So that's a very interesting distinction and I think some follow-up questions, um, to the, um, the applicant to, to determine what's going on would be in order. Um, also, uh, there is a possibility, and I've heard some testimony already, um, that this is a use that possibly was in existence for, for, for hundreds of years, two hundred years. Um, remember that Connecticut general statutes eight dash two would prohibit us from, from not allowing a non-conforming prior existing use. So if this was a use on the property at the time or before that the zoning regulations were established, then we would not be able to prohibit the activity. Now, of course, it is the, um, the applicant's burden to present facts that establish that. So again, I think there is a relevant line of question to go on about, you know, how long has this use? First of all, what, what, what it was really this commercial use? What is really going on? And how long has it existed and in what form has it existed? And how, you know, how, how far does that really stretch back? But, um, you know, I think there are some tangential issues about other activities in the area. Um, I know there's an issue that, that, that the complaint stems from noise, but really those are not relevant. Those are not germane to what's in front of the, um, the, the ZBA right now. It's simply, should this violation notice the cease and desist? Should this really stand? And again, I think it's a clarification of what is this activity? You know, what does distinguish a tree service from a landscaping business? Are they substantially similar or different? Is it going on on the property or is it really off the property? And are we dealing with the storage of equipment, which again, I'm hearing testimony may be used for residential use on, on this farm? And then there's a, there's a very important question to be answered. Is this a non-conforming but pre-existing use? Does it truly predate the existence of the regulations? Because if so, statutorily, this would not be something that we would be able to now prohibit. Um, so I think there are some further questions, some further factual exploration that needs to be done here um, while we have the, the applicant here with us.
Okay, so for, just, just to clarify, how long has this activity been going on? How long has this farm been established? How long have you been doing this method of bringing wood onto the farm? Um, has the equipment evolved over the years? Uh, well, I mean, obviously I would imagine that the equipment has evolved over the years, but a- approximately how long has this, the farm been in existence? And this particular, um, operation been going on for? Bringing, you know, storing farm vehicles, storing equipment to get wood for the farm. How long has it been going on for?
Generations. My great grandfather did it before machinery. My grandfather did it. I'm doing it.
Okay, so it's been going on for a very long time, um, which I believe is what we are looking to hear in regards to the statute of limitations, um, in the general statute. Am I correct, John, in that assumption, Attorney Marini?
Not so much statute of limitations, but the ability to prohibit a use that pre-existed, that, that existed prior to the regulations.
Okay.
Mister Chairman?
Yes, Phil, go ahead.
The, 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 the use of the property for the generations and generations is I, I don't think that any of us are gonna dispute that part of it. But I, the, the cease and desist has to do with what our zoning enforcement officer saw. And what he saw was trucks placard with the logo of an LES tree service and landscaping.
There's no LES.
What's that?
It's not LES, so I don't know whose business that is.
I'm sorry, KES, KES, KES. Please forgive me, I'm sorry. So the question is, what did, is KES tree service and landscaping new to the situation? And is it being operating as a business, which I'm sure KES landscaping trucks drive off the property? Somebody pays you to do work and then you come back and you keep the wood. I get that. That's a business when somebody pays you to do something. So if KES landscaping and construction, I mean, the landscaping and tree service is being operated at one eleven, then the cease and desist is because R forty says you can't operate a business out of there. So the tree service is, is, is new. It's not part of the generations of activity on the land. I may be incorrect, but I think that's an important detail.
Okay. Um, so the next question would be from me is clarifying, I believe, as to what constitutes a commercial business, okay? So are you actually getting clientele to pay you to come remove trees? Or are you just going to remove trees for the farm's use?
For the farm's use.
Just for the farm's use. So there's no money exchanged at all?
Sometimes, sometimes there is.
Sometimes there is. Okay. Um, so could you elaborate a little bit on that?
Sometimes for storm damage, we'll go out, clean up trees that are down and it's, it's on me. I don't get paid for that. Go take the wood, everything that's down. If it's dead wood, it burns better. And then some jobs will go out, we'll do, we get paid for it and the woods go home.
Okay.
Um, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Just, just sort of a point, there, there's a description here of, of this commercial activity. Um, a- and, and to my point about the, uh, the non-conforming pre-existing use, um, sir, can you describe for us how long that type of activity has existed on this property? Um, and I could be more specific. What you just described was, you know, the possibility of taking down a tree, maybe being paid to take down the tree. Was that sort of activity going on back as you described generations? Um, elaborate a little bit a- a- about that for us.
Yes, my grandfather would do it. My, my great grandfather would do it when they, they, I mean, they did well drilling as well. And they had bulldozers, steam shovels, they'd go out and they'd do jobs with all of them.
And they would, similar, a- and, and sorry to interrupt, but, but to kind of clear, kind of zone in on the point. Would they do it in, in, they may not have done it with the same branding, they may not have done it with the same equipment. But were they doing it in a similar way? Were they, were they basically going out, doing a job for, for commercial purposes? For maybe for, with, with, uh, you know, earning, right, earning money to do it and then bringing it back to the property in the same way and utilizing it for the farm?
Yes.
So this, the commercial activity, has it changed over generations and if so, how?
No, not really.
Um, and, and I think, as you've heard, you know, I'm, I'm describing, you know, that, that there is this, this, this very important issue here as to, i- if, if this use truly pre-existed. Yes, it could be commercial, but if this commercial use pre-existed the regulations, there, there is an issue with, with this board enforcing a cease and desist. Can you give us any more specific details about how that use was performed, who performed it? Again, as I've said, it is the burden, it is your burden to prove that this commercial use truly did pre-exist the regulations. I believe the regulations likely date back to the sixties, late fifties, looking at the charter. Um, so the more detail that you can provide, I think that, that would help, um, sort of provide the board with some, with some guidance, some factual basis.
Um, I mean, it was my, my grandfather, my great grandfather. We had an uncle in the family who also did trees for a living. He did it. Um, sometimes it was free, they did it. Sometimes they bartered, cause not only was that, it was also, uh, this was a dairy farm as well. So they would order food, milk, they got paid for it. They took the machines off the farm, the drilling machines, the bulldozers, the steam shovels, and they did work on and off the farm. It's, nothing's changed. It's always been done.
Were, were there different names for the business? I mean, right now I believe it's branded as, is it KES?
No, there was not different names.
Has it always been KES?
No, I, when my, when my grandfather did it?
Yeah.
That was, uh, Bunge well drilling.
Okay, so it's ha- when, when did the KES name come up?
Jesus, thirteen years ago, it's, it's doing business as, it's DVA.
And how late, how, what are those other, give, if you can, the history of those other, other names associated with the activity?
The, uh, the Bunge well drilling?
Yeah.
Hundred years, I'd say, ninety years, eighty years? Started in the fifties and then when it was Jay Watts with his son Dairy Farm, that was even before that, way before that.
So I don't know, is it, let, let's move on a little bit. Let's see if there's anybody else here that would like to speak to, uh, this. Is, is there anybody else on here that would like to give a little bit of insight as to what's going on?
Could, could I chime in?
Who is this?
This is one of the complaintee. I'm Joe, I'm Joe Waskowitz. Um, that's, we're talking about my grandfather and my father and my great grandfather. And, uh, you know, I was the noise complaint, um, and my father.
Then related, correct?
We are related, yes. That, that's my cousin.
Wait a minute, okay, so wait, you were the complaint?
I am a complaint, yes.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so this is then, all right, continue, go ahead and say what you.
I, I just see a whole lot of stuff going on and just accusations and stuff. And I just want to make this probably easier than it has to be, or, or I want to be. The only thing I did was make a noise complaint, me and my father. Because, and it had nothing even to do with the tree service. It was my uncle who has cancer or whatever, is leaving his truck at one o'clock every single morning. The dumpster truck, that's not even related to the tree business. He parks about a hundred foot from my window. And every single morning, to the day, every single day, last night, every day. One o'clock in the morning, he starts up and he leaves. And he comes back from work around one o'clock in the afternoon. That was it. I've got only a couple of things with, with KES problem. With just starting trucks up, I'd be setting off my alarm a couple of times for my security system. Because before six o'clock, I have it on video, um, surveillance camera. Because his lights shine over our fence and he sets off our alarms at five thirty in the morning. And it wakes us up, but.
So your, your major complaint and issue is just the noise, is that correct?
I don't care that he runs a business, no, I just, you know, it's just, yeah, he's common courtesy.
So it, so now that this is starting to come together, okay? This, okay, so to me, this is now starting to seem as though. That number one, it could be easily rectified between the two parties. This is a family feud and I'm not quite sure at this point why we are even here.
That's why I'm trying to make this a little, sorry, easy, easier for everyone and try to end it. It, it's been a family ongoing feud for a while since my grandfather passed and. And, uh, I wish it didn't end up being that way, but, I mean, the farm, which isn't even a farm, it just, uh. It, yeah, I wish it didn't end up the way it is, but it, it is unfortunately, they went after me. And, and my family, and, and we're the original ones of Bunge well drilling. My, my father still owns it, and, and that's where we run off this property along with my business.
Um, so refresh, refresh my memory then. If, if I recall correctly, we did hear a case long ago about adding a driveway.
That, that was for my own personal house that I built this past year, at 119.
And that was, okay, all right, so I've just.
It has nothing to do with the business.
Together here because now that you have given us a little bit of info, at least the way that I see this. Is that the application here is to overturn. A cease and desist based on a complaint about noise. Stemming from a family member who lives next door and also works next door. And once again, here we are kind of debating whether or not. This is something that needs to be intervened on. I mean, you know, the, I don't know, let, let's go down the line a little bit now that we have you on here. Bob, do you have any questions for the neighbor?
No, it's getting confusing at the same time, there's simplicity to it. Um, John brought up some great points. Non-conforming prior use, I think the applicant stumbled upon. Um, without making an actual statement to the business being ran prior to the fifties. And now coming to law, a family matter, noise complaint, you know, seems like something that we are narrowing down. I don't know if I have a particular question at this point, but, um, I, I think we're narrowing the scope. And it's, it's becoming, you know, le- less complicated than it originally seemed to be. So pass this on, but I'm, I'm paying attention following this.
Okay, Phil?
Yeah, I just, my, I, I understand the meat and potatoes and I appreciate the way we, we did this for the, you know, for the, for, for our fellow neighbors and. Of Seymour. I just have one thing I'd like to get some input from Mike Marganski, our, uh, enforcement officer. Because. He, he, he's an employee of the town. He has a job to do, he did it, and I think I respect, we should hear from him. And if he's okay with what he's heard, it would be, it would hold a lot of weight with me if I would hear. Because it's, it just out of respect, because the man did all the footwork and, uh, we have to respect that. He's doing his job also. So if, if Mike could chime in and give a little bit of, uh, um. I mean, we're, we're overturning hi- his, um, cease to the assist. So I, I, I think that Mike could shed some light and maybe see if some of these things. Uh, that led him to make, put on the cease and desist would be satisfactory to him.
Mike, go ahead, the floor is yours.
Thank you, um, I think that everybody's had really good questions. Um, and I think the responses have been, um, very well articulated in a lot of different ways. Um, from the perspective of the enforcement. Um, I guess a couple of things that we just need to remind ourselves in these consideration with this. The first and foremost was, back to the original complaint which came into September. Was that this was a landscaping business that was operating on a residential property. That's what precipitated all of this. The noise complaint came in later on in October. Um, that came in late, that was, that was still, complaint came in through, in through staff member. It was given to me to investigate. And then I investigated the matter, the, and based on that was that. The, at the conclusion of that. It was, um, late October, after the initial re- uh, request for the appeal was requested. Um, the actual written complaint came in which specified regarding noise operations. And that was on November, I believe, twenty seventh, twenty sixth, somewhere around there. Subsequently, um, it is. I have no preference other than just doing enforcement for the town. Um, if. We need to look at, um, if, if however you decide that you rule with this, that is your prerogative. I'm comfortable with the ruling on any, on either side of it. I just want to make sure that we can do our enforcement when we need to do that. We have the avenues for our enforcement to be those decisions that are made by your enforcement officer. At this current time, that happens to be me. Um, that those decisions can be heard by the defendants, the plaintiffs and the general public. When there needs to be all of that taken into consideration. That's the proper avenue to hear these things out. And then the next phase, if that was not satisfied would be. And I don't ever hope that Eli had want to ever go there, but that would be going to the superior court. I am indifferent about this, as far as is listening to all the testimony. It is, comes down to, are we being consistent with our enforcement? Are we doing the right thing? And this is decision to there. And if you. Um, it is your decision to rule in favor of the, um, the, the enforcement action. Or to change, modify or uphold it. Um, if you choose to do anything, um, such, I would also suggest that maybe. Um, a communication and dialogue would be prudent to go to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Um, to have discussions with them to review what we have for our regulations and what our permitted uses are. So that if, as we are, and I do know that we are, we are looking at our permit use, permitted uses, our tables. Um, if there are things that make enforcement where you're having difficulty trying to adjudicate a decision on your end. It's been made on the part of your enforcement area. Maybe we can help narrow some of these, um, questions and have a dialogue between ZBA and PZC. So that we have less of what this is, is involved in going forward in the future. So, uh, I don't have anything else to add into that at this point. Um, uh, that's only my suggestions with that is just that we want to try to be, um, consistent, we want to be fair. Um, and I'll, I'll rest my, uh, voice at this point.
Jeff, what do you got?
Um. So. With the, with the line of questioning that, um. Uh, Counsel Marini was going with, I'm just going to ask, uh, a couple more questions. So we, we sort of established that there's been a history of this type of service on the property. Um, and I, I ask now currently, uh. I think we said there's no wood chipping, but do, do you use the equipment that you have for any? Farm activity, so do you use any of the equipment?
Oh, got it.
For the farm?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so. In a way, it could be considered farm equipment for you as well. Um.
I, I believe that's a question.
Yeah, yeah, and in a way, it could be used as farm equipment for you as well, right?
Yes, yes, all of it, yes.
Okay. Um, and you said, besides for that, there's, and you established there's no chipping that is done on site for things offsite. There isn't any, you don't do any of the services onsite? Because, right, so like if, if you. Brought wood from another work site for a job and you brought it back. You're not doing anything else with that wood for the business side? You're just doing it for?
The side. Yeah, just for the farm.
Okay. Okay.
Good, all right, Paula.
Those.
I just, I, I just have questions right now. So I have the map in front of me that was part of this package. So I'm looking at La- or, or Bunge Road 111, right? I just want to make sure I have people in the right places, right? So. Kevin, who is showing up as RAC here, right? Is. Working out of 111 Bunge, right? So that's the property in question with the noise and the commercial equipment, right?
Yes.
Then we have 119, we got Joe Four, right? Joe Four, who is at 119 Bunge. And Joe, you had made a comment that Bunge well drilling still operates out of 119?
115. That's, that's the other complaint.
Okay, got it, got it, okay. Okay, so. You're on 115 then?
I'm, I'm on 119.
You're on 119.
It's a new, it's a new construction that we just built this past year.
Okay, okay, so you're on.
119 and 115 is, is pretty much the same parcel of property, correct?
Yeah, 115 is behind me.
Right.
All right.
Thing that we approved the driveway for, right?
Okay, but 1, 115 is, like when I would come up Bunge and all this is on my right. And you see the Bunge well, well drilling signs. We have well drilling taking place on 115, which is also in our forty zone, right? We have 119 in the middle where Joe Four, you're not currently doing any kind of business stuff.
No, that's my personal home.
Yeah, just your, your house.
Yes.
And then 111 with the, I'm, I'm just going to call it the tree service for now. So, so that's, and then Joe, you're, Joe Four, you're in the middle.
Yes.
Between two properties, okay, I just want to make sure I have the right. Right picture, right? And then I guess to Joe Four, my question is, you had made the comment that somebody. Is, is in the dump truck at 1AM?
That's, that's my complaint, it wasn't even about the, the, the tree service. It, it was, it was about my uncle leaving at one o'clock every single morning. So, and a dumpster truck, that's not even related to the tree service. And he parks right on the other side of my fence, which is about a hundred foot away from my bedroom window.
All right.
Okay, so.
That's a dumpster truck, it's a tractor trailer.
Yeah.
Um, just then, if the dump truck. Your complaint had nothing to do with, then with the tree service equipment?
It, it did. Well, it, it them too, because it was before seven, uh, uh, more than one time. I have several occasions and trucks idling for, you know, more than ten minutes at a time on, you know, the R40 zone. But, uh, yeah, I mean, that's all it was, was about the noise complaint though.
Okay.
My, my, that was my great grandfather's, you know, property that they were well drilling, you know, back in nineteen, what, four, forty-seven it was. That's when it was, and, and I worked for my, my father, my grandfather, and we all worked together. I'm the fourth, Joe Waskowitz the fourth, so.
Paula, I yield, I yield back to you, go ahead.
Um, I was just trying to, to understand. What was being done on what property, where the noise was coming from? And that was my, my question. What makes it challenging for me? Is, um, I've been in Seymour since, uh, blah, 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 eighty, eighty or eighty-one. And I've seen the Bunge well drilling sign forever. I've seen the little bit farm stuff forever since nineteen eighty. So you, you're talking like forty years, forty-one years, so, um. That's. To me, this has been pre-existing for a while. That's all I have.
Okay, I, I tend to agree with Paula, this is definitely something that I think has been pre-existing. I think hearing some of the testimony today from all parties involved. Seems as though that this, the family dispute and that some very simple civil things. Could be done to rectify this situation. Um, I will go into that in a little bit of detail when we get to the regular meeting. Um, you know, as to what I believe should be done with this. Um, so does anybody else have any other questions, uh, for this particular case?
I have one real quick one.
Phil, go ahead.
Thank you, I, it's for the, uh, the owner of, uh, of the, um, tree service. You were, you were issued a cease and desist on October thirteenth, twenty twenty, is that correct?
Yes.
May I ask you a question, would you honestly answer for me? Have you complied with the cease and desist from October thirteenth to today?
No, not really.
So you ignored it?
It didn't ignore it, can't. Don't, don't, nothing, I appealed it.
Okay. All right. You still had a cease and desist by the, the enforcement officer. You should have complied with it until the appeal, that's, that's the only question I wanted to know.
There is no cease and desist anywhere on my papers that I received, it's a notice.
It's a generic term, I apologize, it's a generic term for the, for the.
So, so if, if, if there's no cease and desist, how could I not abide by it? It was a violation and correction on this paper and I appealed it and nothing was ever said.
Okay.
Okay, very good. All right, um, anybody else have anything that they'd like to add? Okay, moving on to the public comment section of this hearing. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak on this matter, uh, over at 111 Bunge Road?
I mean, is that me?
No.
No.
Any other public comment on 111 Bunge Road going twice?
Do I say about the, the truck?
If there's public comment, I, I mean.
If I'm a public, if I'm a public, if you guys approve his business, whatever, that's on you guys. But I just want regulations or stipulations that the trucks can't be started before a certain time.
Right.
Because they wake me up.
That to me is, is part of a very simple solution, which we are going to get to when we rule on this case in the meeting later.
Yeah.
Um, so is there anything else anybody would like to add? Last public comment going three times, any public comment? Hearing no public comment, I closed this, uh, public hearing on 111 Bunge Road at seven fifty-nine. Okay, moving on to. Case number three on the docket. And this is for 491 North Main Street. I'd like to open this public hearing at seven fifty-nine, okay? Seymour Zoning Board of Appeals will conduct a public hearing on December third at seven fifteen PM. In the Norma Drummer Room, Seymour Town Hall, 1 First Street, Seymour, Connecticut for the following application. Application for renewal of special permit for filling and grading at 491 North Main Street. In accordance with section five point two, ten point zero, twelve point zero and nineteen point zero of the zoning regulations. Property is located at 491 North Main Street, Seymour, Connecticut. Property is located at 491 North Main Street, Seymour, Connecticut. A copy of the application is at Town Hall. At these hearings, interested persons can appear and be heard. Written communications will also be received dated at Seymour, Connecticut, this 12th of November, 2020. Respectfully, Seymour Zoning Board of Appeals Chairman, Richard Dampco. Okay, so for the third case on the docket, this is a renewal of an application for ONG Industries in your packet. You could see all of the information. Um, this is just our, you know, yearly or bi-yearly checkup on them. Uh, is there anybody here that would like to talk about anything that's going on with ONG Industries? Is there any representative here from ONG Industries? Mike, you got anything you want to talk about with ONG Industries?
Mr. Chairman, um, thank you. Um, just so that you know, ONG Industries, uh, Mr. Warren is here to represent them this evening. This is a standard re, uh, renewal application for the, um, filling of the, um, site there. Um, Inland Wetlands Commission just extended the application for another five years. Connecticut Deep and the Army Corps of Engineers has this approved all the way through 2027. This, um, Mr. Nesteriak, the town engineer and I were out at the site, um, earlier, um, prior to the holidays. We found everything to be consistent with, um, the practices, um, in the best industry practices. Um, we met with the, um, staff of ONG Industries. We see nothing abnormal that would, um, say otherwise, um, to, uh, processing and approving this application.
Okay, thank you, Mike. We'll go down the line. Bob, anything?
No questions.
Phil?
No, they just want to say that they, uh, have always, um, every time, I've been involved with them for, for many years and they've always done the right thing. I think it's, uh, uh, pretty good. All set.
Very good. Jeff?
Seems pretty cut, cut and dry.
Cut and dry. Paula?
Nope, um, we had renewed this last year for a year.
That is correct. Okay, anybody else would like to speak on this? Okay, moving on, is there any public that would like to speak on, uh, 491 North Main Street? Any public comment going twice? Any public comment going three times? Hearing no public comment, I move to close this public hearing at 8:02. Hearing no other cases on the docket for the public hearing, the public hearing portions of this, um, meeting in session are over. Moving on to our regular general meeting, does anybody need to take a few minutes before we start this? Everybody's good?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so since everybody's good to go, I'd like to call the general meeting to order at 8:03 PM. We could please rise to the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag.
United States of America. Republic. Which stands one nation under God. Undivisible. Living justice for.
Okay. Seeing of alternates. We have a full house tonight. We don't have any alternates with us, so we are good to go. Moving on to item number four, first public comment. Is there anybody from the public here that wants to talk about anything? Public comment going twice. Public comment going three times. Malia, have we received any correspondence for public comment?
No, not at this time.
Uh, Rich?
Yes.
I thought, um, after public comment, we need to approve the meet, meeting minutes.
Yeah, we haven't gotten there yet, Paula. We're still on item number four, public comment.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Yep. So we have not received any public comment and written communication according to Malia. So from there, we're moving on to item number five. The approval of the public hearing meeting minutes from September 3rd, 2020.
Make a motion.
Should have all received all that information going back last month. Um, we've had ample time to review it.
Motion to approve the minutes of September 3rd.
Second by Paula, is there any discussion?
Um, only discussion is that I would like my name to be fixed. My last name is spelled incorrectly throughout the document.
Okay, Jeff, could you please, uh, spell your name correctly for the record?
Of course. My name is spelled H-A-N-E-W-I-C-Z.
Got it.
Okay. Very good. All right, so, uh, with that said, any other discussion? Hearing no discussion, uh, adding, moving forward and correcting documents with Jeff's last name. Uh, and, uh, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Anybody opposed? Anybody want to abstain? All right, motion carries. All right, item number six on the agenda is the approval of the regular meeting minutes from September 3rd, 2020. In your packets, you have it all.
Oh, moved.
Time. So moved by Paula.
And wait, 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 with the same correction for Jeff's.
With the same correction with Jeff's last name, correct. Can I get a second?
Second.
Phil, second. Okay, any discussion? Jeff, you want your name corrected? That's correct?
Yes.
Okay, uh, so any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Okay, item number seven on the agenda, the Ford Buckingham Road variance. So in our packets, we got the application. We heard the testimony again, uh, from Ford Buckingham Road. You know, again, this is, uh, just kind of a continuation of what we've had already. This is the applicant's second time in front of us. Uh, so let's go down the line. Let's talk a little bit about what we got going on. Bob?
Um, what I see here is with the neighboring situations and the conditions, the facts that were laid out, it does address, address a safety concern. I, I don't, you know, I don't see anything with this application that, you know, that's an issue for me.
Okay.
So I don't have any questions.
Okay, Phil?
Would it be okay to just make a motion at this time, sir?
Um, let's just go through the list of everybody, just.
All right, go ahead. I'm all set with it. I'm all.
You're all set, Jeff?
Yep.
I, I'm all set too.
You're good, Paula?
Um, yes, I just wanted to say that, um, Jesse, what helped me was his like aerial view of the property. I thought that was really filled in a lot more in the area with explanation. That's all.
Okay. All right, very good. Then I will entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Jeff, second by Paula. Is there any craft a motion here then that we could put in with a hardship? So let's see. Motion to approve based on.
Non-conforming lot prior to present zoning regulations.
Excellent. That sounds good to me. Uh, so motion to approve based on it being a non-conforming lot. Any other discussion on that?
More accurately, Mr. Chairman, non-conforming use.
Non-conforming use. Non-conforming use. Thank you for that correction. Any other discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'm just, I would add there in the words, um, it's similar to pre-existing con, conditions within the neighborhood.
Okay, so if we can amend that to say similar pre-existing conditions in the neighborhood?
Yeah, comparable to pre-existing conditions.
Okay, Paula, since you're writing this all down, could you please repeat the motion?
Okay, I'm giving it a shot.
Thank you.
Phil, you had said something non-conforming, you were Mike, non.
Um, Paul, the only, we, we want to make sure that we capture part of the statutory hardship. The, uh, and part of the, you know, um, okaying the application, the statutory hardship being part, the parcel is in the non, uh, is an existing non-conforming, uh, use, uh, and the, and the, of the lot size.
An existing non-conformance.
So, Mr. Chairman, this wouldn't be so much, this is not a hardship. So this would be simply indicating that it's a pre-existing, a non-conforming, pre-existing use. And for that reason, um, should not be subject to five from two of the regulations.
This is, this is a diff, different, uh, we're doing Buckingham.
Oh, right. We're doing Buckingham Road.
I was like, what?
So, yeah.
This is, okay. Parcel in existing, um, parcel in existing.
The hardship to just read the parcel is in an existing non-conforming lot. That's all.
Non-conforming lot. Okay, period. Got it.
Okay, Paula, read it back to us, please.
Okay, parcel is in existing non-conforming lot. Um, prior to, prior to zoning.
Present zoning regulations.
Present. Zoning regulations. Approval is comparable. Is comparable. To. Approval is comparable to.
To neighboring lots.
Other properties in the area.
Right, that's fine. That sounds good. Who's second?
Okay, so I'm going to read it one more time. Uh, parcel is in existing non-conforming lot prior to zone, prior to current, prior to present zoning regulations. Approval is comparable to other properties in the area. Okay?
Sounds good to me.
Okay, are we going to vote on this?
All those.
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? All right, motion carries. The application is approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
Yes, you too. Thanks, Jesse. Um, moving on to the next item of business is 491 North Main Street, item number eight, renewal of a special permit.
So moved.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the, uh, special, um, permit renewal for 491 North Main Street.
Motion by Phil, second.
Second.
Voila, any discussion on the motion? This is cut and dry. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anyone abstain? All right, Chair votes aye, motion carries. ONG is good to go. All right, item number nine on the agenda, 111 Bunge Road, the appeal of the zoning enforcement action. Uh, so we just heard this, all of the evidence, all of the facts, all of the testimony. Uh, I'm going to start this one out by saying that I think that this is something that really shouldn't be in our jurisdiction here. And I think that there is some very, very easy neighborly things that could be done between the two of them to rectify the situation. Uh, one of which is having the courtesy to not run vehicles, uh, prior to or after the noise ordinance has, uh, started or ended for the day. Um, maybe making some modifications, moving the truck a little further along the property line, so it's further away from his property. I, I see this as a family feud more so than something that the town should intervene in. And to be honest, I really don't think that we're in a position to start setting precedences on this type of thing. Um, you know, when you have hundreds of other businesses in the town, uh, pretty much doing the same thing. You know, I think that this is something that the neighbors could be worked out, right? That it could work out with neighbors. That's just my personal opinion, listening to the, the testimony, and that's kind of my feeling on this. Um, you know, being that the biggest complaint was noise, I think that I'm okay with saying, you know what? Let's lift the, uh, citation with the stipulation that he's going to respect the noise ordinance and they're going to respect each other as, as, as neighbors should when having two businesses next door to each other. Um, you know, this.
Rich, the, the issue is they're not next door to each other. Joe four is in the middle.
Right. It's the same property. I mean, it's the same thing. When I say next door, I mean.
I'm trying to make the point that there's two, you know, stuff here, stuff here, and he's in the middle.
Right. They're neighbors. And they're family too. You know, so this is, is somewhat also of a family feud. That's my personal take on this, and that's kind of how I'm looking at it. Let's go down the line. Bob?
Um, I'm not going to spend much time on this, but I think we saw two issues. The business being on the property, parent non-conforming issue, and then number two being the noise, which I think we're, we're addressing here, and I think you made a good point, you know, to say that this might be something that we shouldn't be dealing with, but a stipulation for noise and, you know, uh, another personal take would be, you know, neighborly aspects should be being addressed here. But I think we're dealing with the noise, you know, being the, the issue here. So that's my take on this one, in, in a nutshell, and to keep it simple.
Okay. Um, yeah, no, I mean, I understand. This, this case could get way more complicated. Um, you know, however, we're just dealing with the application here at hand. Phil, what do you got on this?
I'm ready to move if you, if you, I'm ready to make a motion.
Ready to make a motion?
Yeah. I'd like to move to, uh.
Hold on, let's.
Wait a minute, you want to go around?
Yeah, let's go. Let's just finish going around, just so we keep it consistent, because, you know, I like everybody to have their voice heard. All right, so Phil, you got nothing other than wanting motion? Jeff?
Um, I think it was worked out through questioning, uh, with the board and everyone that. It's a service that's been operated on the property for many years before these regulations were in place. Along with those questionings, I think we established that no actual business, tree business landscaping is being done there. Um, storage of equipment, and the equipment that's being stored is also used for farm use. So I, I think that makes this, um, clear that it, it's something that we should, uh, rule with the, the applicant in this matter.
Okay, Paula?
Um, hold on one sec. I'm looking for something. Okay, um, one property for the tree business has 3.37 acres. The Joe four has 3.63. And I'm going to say that I think Joe three has at least something comparable to the other two. Um, so, you know, in terms of storing of equipment, I understand, but I agree with Jeff. Okay, so Phil, I'm ready for your, uh, motion.
Uh, I'm, I move to grant the appeal of decision placed on 111 Bunge Road.
Whoa, 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 slow down. Okay, okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, move to grant appeal.
Of decision.
Of Bunge.
Of decision of 111 Bunge Road.
Oh, this, okay, decision. Of. Got it.
Placed on October 13th, 2020 by the, uh, enforcement officer.
13, 20, 20 by enforcement. Officer Mike Markins. Okay.
So, okay, so motion by Phil, second.
Second. I'll get Jeff, okay?
Jeff, go ahead, Jeff. Jeff, second by Jeff.
Yep.
Yeah, right. Give him a little action tonight. Any discussion on the motion at hand? Uh, I think it's clearly written. I think that, um, it's pretty clear that we are overturning the decision, uh, of the zoning enforcement officer. Um, and hopefully they could work it out, you know, by, with neighbors.
The caveat was going to be, and I was going to say it to Kevin, you need to make sure that you work. The caveat was gonna be, and I was gonna say it to Kevin, you need to make sure that you work it out with.
They, right, they abide by the noise ordinances and they work it out as neighbors.
Yeah. It's, it's nice to see you, but I don't want to see you anymore.
It was nice to see you also.
Alrighty, so any other, uh, discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, chair votes aye, motion carries. The, uh, zoning officer's decision has been overruled. Alright, moving on to item number.
Thank you very much, everybody. You're welcome. Merry Christmas, happy new year. Happy holidays, you guys. Thank you.
Yeah, you too. Now to item number ten on the agenda, staff reports. Mike, what's up?
Um, nothing. We, you have everything there, and if you have any questions on any other matters, I'll entertain those.
Okay, uh, what do we have coming down the pike for next month? Anything?
Um, right now, no, I'm not aware of anything currently. Um, just to kind of give you a, a background on a couple of projects. Earlier back in November, December, there's a pre-subdivision that was approved years ago, um, over by Bunge Terrace, um, Bissel. I, I want to, it's over on the other side of Route Eight in that area there. There's twenty five lot subdivision that may be coming through, um, by, uh, an applicant, um, soon. The Smith Street project, they came in for their, um, zoning permit, um, this week, and, um, be reviewing those documentation. So I think that the, uh, the housing project on Smith Street, about moving forward, um, within the next thirty to sixty days, we'll start to see activity in the neighborhood there.
Um, it's straight or Spring Street?
Uh, Smith. Smith.
Oh, there's something going on there too?
Um, they had, uh, there was an application for, uh, uh, affordable housing that was going, and that's going in there. That was approved about a year ago.
Ah, okay, alright, alright. Gotcha. So that's separate from the Spring Street project. Okay, what else?
Um, that's off the top of my head, uh, just there's some minimal light line mergers that have occurred. Um, enforcement's consistent, um, and that's where we're at this point.
Okay. Alright, very good. Does anybody have any questions for Mike?
No.
No? Okay, moving on to item number eleven, new business. I got nothing. Uh, so moving on from new business to item number twelve, correspondence, general correspondence. Malia, have we received any general correspondence on anything?
We have not.
No hate mail, no fan mail?
Not, not yet. Not tonight.
Phil hasn't gotten any love letters or anything?
Nothing yet.
Alright. Uh, then moving on to item number thirteen, public comment. Last public comment of the night. Has anybody got anything from the public? Is there any public here that wishes to comment?
Nice cap, Anne Marie. Beautiful cap.
Any public comment going twice? Any public comment going three times? Hearing no public comment. Public comment is now closed. Now comes item number fourteen, the magical moment of the evening.
Motion to return.
Motion by Phil.
Second by Jeff. Second by Paula.
Is there any discussion on this motion?
No.
Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, alright, chair votes aye.
Eight twenty-three.
Good work, everybody. Thank.